I'd like to call this meeting of the Armada Township Planning Commission to order. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome back, everyone. It's our first meeting of 2025. And I'd like to welcome our new zoning administrator, Michelle. And we have two Steves and two Joes, so I'll try and remember to use last names until you get the voices. But if you miss anything, don't be afraid to interject and get it down. And welcoming back our planner, Caitlin. You left us in good hands. So Adam did a very nice job, so thank you very much. Welcome back. Our first order of business is to call the roll. Michelle?
Amber Crombie. Here. Finn?
Here.
Cucci?
Here.
Jabara?
Here.
Here.
Nickel?
Here.
Arnold?
Yeah, can you just talk to here, you guys? Through the mic.
Here, Steve.
Okay, note that Steve Arnold is here. Hey, Steve. Okay, next is to approve the agenda if there are no amendments. I can really hear mine.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, approve the agenda as presented. That's Amber Crombie. And a second. That is Joe Cucci. All in favor of approving the agenda as presented? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is the approval of our minutes from our last regular meeting, which was December 4th. Are there any corrections to those minutes? If there are no corrections, a motion would be in order to approve as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second. That's Cucci and Jabara. JoJo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next is our first public comment period. We have one just before the adjournment. If you'd like to make a public comment on anything, just step up to the podium and state your name and we can get that.
Hey, guys. Jason Berger, 212-00 Armada Ridge Road. I wanted to, it looked like the, some of the stuff being addressed today, sorry, I was running behind getting here, so I wasn't able to brush up on it. But in the packet, it looked like there was the agricultural preservation zone and some definitions. And my question is, is now the time to, so backing up, I spoke with the township board about some definitions for livestock and domestic animals, and that was approved and it didn't happen yet. And I plan on discussing that with the township board again, but I wasn't sure if I would be missing an opportunity to bring that up because that section of the ordinance is being discussed today. So my question is, does that need to happen today? The submission for those definitions in order to have them considered for inclusion in this section of the ordinance? Or could we come back to that after I approach the board on it?
Okay, to answer your question, the parts that we're looking at in the ordinance are very specific, and none of them pertain to livestock. We're looking at different agribusiness and some of our special ancillary uses that are used for, you know, distillation and events and things like that. So nothing that we've, that we're covering in this part deals with any type of livestock.
When I skimmed through it, I saw definitions in there, and perhaps like what you're saying, those definitions are just pertinent to what you guys are addressing now. I just wanted to make sure and verify that I wasn't missing an opportunity.
No, in fact, our planner has the, a unique opportunity to go through the entire ordinance, which she will be doing. And I imagine you'll be touching on those, all areas of the ordinance at that point, with the livestock and any mention of that sort of thing.
Correct. The entire definition section will be reviewed. The definition section is one of the last chapters that we'll review, just because we have to figure out all the uses that we want to make sure there's a definition for, but that will be at a later meeting.
All right, thank you very much.
I can.
Thank you.
You can see that it does say definitions on here.
Correct. It is an article that we are cherry picking into to modify. But as part of our zoning ordinance update, the resident could, if they've already submitted it to the township board, recommended changes to the definitions. I know you've spoken a few times on the matter with the planning commission. But if you've submitted that to the township, I know I haven't received a copy of it, but I could keep that in mind while we are doing that review. So I'll talk with Michelle to see, or if you have a copy, you can send it to the township and we can make sure I get a copy of it.
And one of the recommendations in our year-end review is that we could have a joint meeting with the planning and the board to see, you know, get a sense of direction and, you know, see what kind of course that the board would like us to take if there's, if they have things like that that we could be looking at. We haven't gotten that yet, so. So at this point, there's nothing at that, but it is with the whole rewrite of the zoning ordinance that will be. And will there be a schedule at some point when we get back on track? And so people will be able to know what we're going to be discussing at each meeting and be on the agenda?
Generally speaking, so one of the thing, we'll talk about during the zoning ordinance subcommittee topic. I can answer that question.
Okay, okay. We'll stick around. It's on the agenda that we're going to be discussing, having a subcommittee to get more in depth, so touch on that. Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Okay.
Would you like a copy of it, what we're addressing?
Well, there's not anything with livestock, but.
Well, he's concerned. That's why I put it out there. And/or for the.
It is, it is on the, the website does have the packet that'll show you what we're discussing tonight, so you can, you can pull that up, so.
Okay, then you could go from there.
There are copies over there up the zoning ordinance.
On the door?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, you put it out?
There is copies of that.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other public comments this time? Like I said, there's one more at the end of the meeting.
Marcia Hollins. Did you say there are copies of what?
The zone, the ordinance amendments that they're talking about.
Oh, yeah, that one.
There are copies over there.
Okay, like I said, we've got one more before adjournment. We'll move on to, we have no public hearing this evening, so reports and correspondence, the project status report. The only change that really happened is we did get a new site plan review for the self-storage on center, but it is not quite up to, it's not ready for the planning commission because there are several outstanding issues. So those are being addressed and then probably see that the next planning commission meeting. Are there any other reports or correspondence? Seeing none, a motion would be in order to receive and file the reports and correspondence.
So moved.
All right, Amber Crombie. And a second. That's Finn. All in favor to receive and file the reports and correspondence? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Okay, under the unfinished business, this is the, our ag zoning ordinance, which unfortunately for Caitlin, we took a little detour from the schedule. And we concentrated on these because there was a little more need to look at these first. So what you have in front of you is draft five?
Oh, sorry. Okay, I'll wait for you.
Stevie?
Yeah, so I just want to start off right away, before we catch this, I wanted to make a motion.
Okay.
To postpone the ag SAA ordinance text amendment until the next regular planning commission meeting.
Okay, so the motion is to postpone to the next meeting?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have Nickel, Amber Crombie. Okay, to postpone till the next meeting, and I'm sure that's just to get discussion on the table. Is there a discussion on the motion?
What's the reason? I'll be honest.
So there's still, there's still quite a bit more that has to go through, also including with what Jay's got plus, I think that you'll find probably letter D coming up, a new business with the ordinance subcommittee.
Okay.
Will probably explain that more.
Do you have specific things that we should have on the table so it can be more useful for us when we come back next month? Any specific items?
I don't have exact specific items only because, again, based upon my motion, that the ordinance subcommittee will probably define more of the reasoning for what it's going to, it's not going to be a secret. It's going to come, it's just that there's going to be, I'm sure you can tell the subcommittee, it's going to primarily, I think, hit on more than just this, along with ordinances.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion on the motion?
You said subsection D, Steve?
So ten under new business, zoning ordinance subcommittee.
Ten, oh, under.
On the agenda.
On the agenda.
All right. Yeah.
So you want the subcommittee to review the motion? Or to review the changes?
To review your ordinance.
To this ordinance. That's, that's why you're postponing?
There's still more that has to, you know, go, I guess, that we're still dealing with this, that. Yep, I guess that's, I'm just post, I'm asking to postpone it. That was my motion because the subcommittee is probably going to be handling potentially this. If it doesn't, it may not then. Maybe the subcommittee is not going to handle that, to my understanding.
Because I, if I can pipe Ben.
Caitlin?
The subcommittee is intending on looking, like you said, front to back, the entire zoning ordinance project. One of the reasons we pulled this out to work on this text amendment is because we knew we had current, as well as pending, applications that would want to utilize the changes here. And so the intention was is to move this forward so then it can actually be used, as opposed to the zoning ordinance project takes a year. And we did not want to delay users by a year to get through that process. We knew that there were already, in reading the language, it didn't work the way we had thought it would, especially not how we want it to with the current applications we're looking at. And so we wanted to make changes so we could operate within that.
And how many applications do you have pending?
So we have Miller Farms that's still here. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit out of the loop because I've been gone. I believe there were, there's the, yes, I believe it's frontier with the other commercial establishment. They've had a pre-application meeting, but I don't think ever came forth with an application. I understand there's been events or interest in doing things there, and that's been something the township has addressed on a case-by-case basis.
And that, and that's, no, I meant new. Those are ongoing.
So those are, those are the two. I vaguely remember there was another facility that was interested, but I couldn't tell, I remember it just being mentioned. So that's three different applications that would be part of wanting this change.
Let me ask you this, then, wouldn't, wouldn't that be, wouldn't they be under that ordinance? Because they've applied for it, or, you know, their interest is already pending?
So the ordinance hasn't been adopted, so they can't follow these rules?
Correct, so they'd fall under those previous ones.
Correct, and so the answer would then be, no, you cannot do these things.
All right, so we're trying to allow them to operate the way they want to?
They want the new ordinance. They want, okay, I was under the impression they wanted the previous. I'm like, okay.
Oh, no.
That's fair.
This is giving more freedom to them. For them, allowing them to do those things.
Yeah.
Maybe we should tweak it some more?
I'm not aware. I believe, I think a lot of it goes back to understand, again, I don't know if there's any concerns about the current language. I think this has been your draft for about the last two months or so. So this is the same version that was at the public hearing associated with it. So if there is any other discussion or information that would be helpful, can clearly provide that then, so then you can take action at the next meeting. But the goal of this document is there, there is interest in it being utilized now, and so we want to move this forward.
The new.
Correct, this text amendment, and then have the zoning project work separately because it is going to be a lot more interdisciplinary and take a lot more time.
So when will the subcommittee then go and?
So you're going to talk about that in a little bit, but the, the subcommittee approach is intended to take the, so we've already done one article, so we did the non-conformities.
Yes.
And so we have about another 15 to go.
14, yeah, whatever.
And so within our regular active business and making time to do that hasn't really been effective over the last year. We've done one article out of 12 months. And so the intention is, with the suggestion of the subcommittee, is we could have a smaller group of people that really dig into it. I find for clients that utilize that method, we're able to get through more content productively. And then ultimately, it still will come to the planning commission for everybody's review. But it's a smaller working group that you can get through the content faster, and you guys can focus on doing all the site plan work and those type of applications that are also still coming through. Not to get ahead of myself.
And I'm not trying to beat the bush here, but has, have they voiced their opinion to you? Or is there a letter that they produced, you know, to Michelle?
Who's they?
Whoever, the Trillium and whoever needs it, McJeff?
So it's been vocalized in person to me at the planning commission meetings, at, at the planning commission meetings. And then I did talk to the previous zoning administrator, Chris, at least on those two occasions when we talked about those applications.
Right, do they have to, for lack of better words, put in a letter of request for the new ordinance? Being that they're, okay, it's just.
So this is something the planning commission chose to self-initiate, rather than making the applicant petition for a text amendment.
I'm sorry, say that again.
The planning commission said, we would like to fix this, initiated the amendment to fix it, instead of making the applicant petition to change the ordinance.
That's fair.
And we're really looking at two different things. What Caitlin's doing with the zoning ordinance is a complete rework. This is, like I say, initiate, buy us, and it's being handled completely separate. We've had the public hearing, we've had a subcommittee for this to look at this, to get it to this point. It's now at the point where it's either, it's either ready to adopt or there's something that's not quite right. I really don't think it's ready to be postponed. It's like, if it's got something specific, we should look at it and address it. If not.
Agree.
It's time to move on.
Yes.
So if there's sometimes, if people have specific things that are not in here, like say, went through the subcommittee and a public hearing as, as it stands right here with these, with all these corrections. So it's, it's either ready or there's something that's not quite right and we have to fix it, but.
And I, and I didn't mean to bash you, Caitlin. I, I didn't want to stall where we were, you guys. And, and I'm, I'm not bashing you either, Steve, because I, that's why I was kind of picking your brain to see what specifically there was.
Jeff, certainly the applicant, we need to move forward in there sinks, but there's other items in this that doesn't pertain to Jeff.
Yeah.
That really hasn't been spelled out, that if we're going to take 11 pages to just make for one applicant, and I know you were trying to, and I came into this with the very tail end, but like I said, last month or two months ago when we started this and went through it, there were so many items and we, we spent three hours going through that stuff, but it's still, we only needed to do a small item for Miller Farms, for example. The rest of the items that were in there didn't pertain, and that was just, you know, to me. I think the whole event barn, I think really circumvents the way that this was put together. Circumvents a commercial facility versus just in the event barn or boutique, as that word was used in here. A boutique is completely different from an event barn, but it's labeled as an event barn. And there's several of them in this community that could capitalize on that, and we would have a whole nother. I don't think it was thought out properly because I can see how it, you could read between the black print on event barns, and you could really make.
Sure.
You could make it work in your favor, and the township would be playing beyond 10-yard catch-up. They'd be at the other end of the field trying to, to control that.
And, and, and I'm not being a contrarian, but you can always manipulate the context, and you already know that.
I know, but that, the specifics of the way that, like the event barn was put in place there, I could go through and pick that apart, and here's one particular property I know that somebody could go in and buy and totally turn that into a full-blown facility, and this commission and the board would be, and even the, I think the code enforcer would be like scratching their heads like, how do we fix this? But it's there now.
So are the concerns strictly with the event barn section and the rest are okay, or you have concerns with other sections of the?
Well, I guess, I really thought, if anything, you know, streamlined to try to get the one applicant who is actually looking for the fix versus rewriting, you know, the, the, the whole 11 pages of, is there anybody else in there that it's requiring?
No, we're, we're not rewriting it for just one applicant. We did go through and, and realize that when we went through some of these ordinances that they did need tweaks. They, you know, we found out this one, you know, it talks about food and it really didn't address food. You know, that there were minor little discrepancies that didn't make sense. And so we realized that it did need, all of these needed a little cleanup. So that's why we addressed all of them. We weren't just trying to address it to one applicant.
Did the fire marshal look at this and have any input?
No.
Kevin, are you the fire marshal?
Yeah.
He is, he's been a fire marshal. Yeah.
I briefed, I briefed over it.
Yeah. But you haven't, you briefed, sure, you briefed over it, but you haven't been included with.
That's correct. So just briefing over it, I did realize the fire department was mentioned for egress access. My concern, just looking at it, is I think they're, even though they're using a barn, it's still got to meet the life safety and building codes for assembly use. And I think that becomes an issue when you take, if someone thinks now that they have a barn that was built for agricultural and that they could just turn it into an event use, that poses somewhat of a problem because they would still have to go through life safety and building codes and still have to meet assembly use. And if you don't do that, and there's a misconception or miscommunication, and someone holds an event and something happens, and it's not meeting the fire code or building code, who's liable? Besides the property that's having that event, so that would be my only concern looking at it, that you really do have to dictate, you still have to meet the building and life safety codes. And then, so.
Is that adjusted with special use that would be determined on, say you, you're talking about the property that somebody could turn into the next?
Right, and that's where I just kind of, you've got to be careful because if you take a building that's a barn built for agricultural use, there's a potential that they'd have to do so much to bring it up to assembly use as far as egress, potential for suppression. It depends on the type of assembly use that I, I would require them to have an architect or engineer stamp and sign those plans. Basically, they're taking the liability to say this is now built for assembly use. So no matter what happens in the zoning ordinance, still the building and fire code has to be met for that, for that use. That would be my only concern, having briefed over it.
Let's see, the event, the event barn section, the event barn section.
The event barn section, yeah, that's the way, I did see that you did mention fire department for egress access. That was part of it, I believe. I, like, so I just looked at the packet today, I ship. But I, that would be my only concern is that, is the worry to make sure people understand that they would still have to meet life safety and building codes, and that's my lane, is just the life safety codes in general.
I was under the impression you already did that, because based on your letter.
For which?
From in December, hang on. I was under, I, and I'm, I'm sorry, I can't memorize everything.
Are we talking about one specific business?
That's what I'm assuming you're.
So that's, I, I was assuming that you're altering the specific ordinance or.
In general.
In general?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, so that was, might have been the specific one business that we made a review on? I, if this is a change for, this is overall applying to all future use, correct? Yeah, so.
I bring back a point order.
Yeah.
So I was, we're kind of getting, so I only just said, you asked for my reasoning, and I said, has the fire marshal reviewed this entire revised revision here and given input? Have you gotten anything from the new, we have new code enforcer. Have they looked at it? Again, we're back to, when we start putting these ordinances in place, we also have to look at, how is it enforced? What is, besides the life and safety well-being, how are you enforcing it? If you put something in there that isn't enforceable, or becomes difficult, you may need some input so that your code enforcer isn't going out there saying, well, how do I handle this? Can I bring in the building department? Can I bring in the fire marshal? Do I need to get supervisor involved? That's all that I'm just saying, and I think that, again, it goes back to the subcommittee would, my understanding, would probably be able to streamline an applicant that's in place to prioritize certain ordinances that are needed for the applicant and still be able to keep working on the rest of the ordinances that are also in place. This wouldn't be putting that applicant, you know, back out to the end of the year. That, that's not the intent. The intent is just to help expedite so that applicants aren't having to come back four, five, six meetings that hopefully within two, maybe three tops, they're in and out.
My question to that is, and that, this would be more towards her, to Caitlin, if anything's not in our ordinance, then it goes back to the state?
Um, so.
Whatever that falls back on, or if we don't have it itemized here.
Well, to some extent. So the zoning ordinance is step one in a lot of the processes. Any rules that we put in here would not, cannot contradict the building code.
Correct.
Or life and safety and welfare. So you don't, in zoning, you don't have to say you must always meet building and codes because we already have that as a general zoning requirement. So it doesn't have to be in this text amendment to be true and applicable. And that is something that a lot of agricultural businesses during a pre-application meeting or when they're applying for a special land use, we say, so you realize this is step one, you still have to do building code. Because like you said, it is a significant investment to take a pole barn structure and say, now I'm going to make this into a public safety facility. There's a lot of hay and there's a lot of candles at weddings, so watch out. And the same thing with how they deal with porta-potties and things of that nature, that there are some things that building code has to take over in those public spaces. So that's, so they play together, but this is step one, and then next goes into building.
Correct, I just want to make sure that's, that they're aware of that, that there are obviously life safety building codes. They still have to follow.
Correct.
That's, that's, that's my link at this point.
Yep.
Well, Kevin, because the requirement is that they, that they have to provide an emergency action access plan as approved by, you know, fire department.
Right, and I read that, so that's, like I said, that's only part of it. So they'd still have to, they'd still have to meet all the life safety codes.
Correct.
And then when you get into public assembly or holding larger events, there are things that we may determine, because of a specific hazard for that facility, we might require something extra, which is in the fire code that we've adopted, but that's just.
But that's, that's part of your review. That's why I don't understand what more we can put in here other than that.
And that's, right, so I just want to make sure that they're aware, obviously, that they still got to meet life safety and building codes. So it would be more than just an egress. It's far more that we would be looking at from a life safety code standpoint.
Yeah, because the site plan section.
And if that's already set up somewhere, then that's, as long as they're understanding that it's not.
So that the wording, just that it's an emergency action, action slash access plan, it just needs to have the wording that there's more to it?
Right, I mean, it, like I said, my only concern is someone would get this and look at it as a standpoint of, well, all I have to do is meet these criterias, but if they don't understand it's step one, that's fine. They'd still have to go through a life safety review. We'd be looking at, for instance, you'd have to just, okay, what kind of assembly or event are they holding? Is the difference between how many people they could have based on the square footage before you need suppression system? How much exiting you need, each exit width? There's a lot that goes into reviewing public assembly facilities, including what's our egress. If we get to a larger event, we might want, want more than one drive accessing the property because if you have a event where there's a max exodus, we still want to be able to get emergency apparatus. And so there's a lot that goes into it. I think I did see the fire department mention in there. I just want it to be known that it's a lot more than just access that we would be looking at, and they still have to follow building and all the fire codes that are in place, so.
So this, this would be amending just initial information. They still have to go through the full site plan, special land use. And that's always been, you've had to say in that particular matter.
Right, and just being, I just want to make sure that's just known, so I'm not trying to, obviously on the tail end too, I just want to make sure that's.
Because my understanding is that you are brought in pretty early in the process, that they have to get, you know, before you and have it reviewed before it gets too far along. So, you know, to me, I thought that that was just part of the normal process.
And that's, that's fine. I just want to make sure that that's known. I don't want, you know, individuals out there to think that it's that simple and that they don't have to go through a life safety review, or that because it's a barn that they don't have to follow the building or, or fire codes. They still have to do those things, so.
We got to be careful hypotheticals too. I mean, anything could be, this is phase one. We're talking about things that are phase two, three, and four. You know, as far as the cycle, I mean, these, they could think that all they want, but as they.
Right, as long as that's, exactly.
No, but your protocol never changes.
Okay.
We're not changing, right?
Right.
So, not to.
No, I just want to make sure, obviously, that.
No, because we're not changing his.
Okay, we're not changing his, but what about, are these event barns going to be inspected at least once a year? You know, things change, people get laxigazious. I think we should put something in here.
Yeah, like I said, I just have, I didn't have a time to actually really study the process. I just want to make sure, so. Yeah, like I said, I just have, I didn't have a time to actually really study the process, I just want to make sure, so I don't want to sit there and say nothing and, because you're right, you don't want to contradict it, we have our fire code, our fire prevention ordinance in place and life safety code, where we would inspect it, we'd want to inspect it, obviously, initially, and again, you might have somebody that already has a structure built and they want to change the use to public assembly, we may go, well, you're gonna have to have an architect or engineer stamped set of drawings submitted for us to prove that because we're gonna put the liability back on that. We're not gonna take the liability as a municipality, so I just want to make sure that's known.
Yeah, no.
And it's, and that, you know, I don't want anything contradicting that to be kind of misconstrued.
Again, part of my reasoning by saying that there still is an opportunity that we're looking at the stuff that the fire marshal, the building department has the opportunity as well to give their input. I had a meeting here with the supervisor about the, showing him December about the storage unit, just going over the, the site plan. Mel was in here and just walked over and, you know, just asked, you know, kind of what are you guys doing shooting a breeze? Showed him, said, you know, have you seen this? And he goes, what is this? He didn't even know what it was. And when we showed him that it's for a storage unit on Center Road, he goes, oh, that's the first time I've seen this. You're already getting through site plan process and it even states in the ordinance that there's, they're one of them. Also, the fire department, the building inspector, they're all supposed to be looking at that along with you guys, and he's never even seen a copy of it. I'm not saying that that blame is here, I'm just saying that here we are, looking at eleven pages of significant ordinance change, not minor, significant. It should allow for some people to have some eyes outside of what we've got here. That's all that I'm asking.
Okay, well, I would say that the event barn is major, but the rest of it is minor. The other one, the rest of this is tweaks. But if you want.
So that's why I made my motion.
Okay, and then we're still on discussion?
Yep.
Caitlin, would it make any sense, we probably want to do this all at once, to split this if we were to take the event barn off?
Um, so you could, you could take the event barn out. The track change that we would probably remove to not leave a gap, for lack of a better term, is probably under that value added business where we, trying to think where we put that. Because this is, again, the event barn is the idea that we would, it was otherwise, the use was under the agro business, so you're kind of remedy the other agriculture-related event venue that we have in the township. So that's something that we could just take that section, have that go with the rest of the zoning ordinance amendment process because it is a new use. But we're just, we've used it otherwise under this agro business umbrella and that wasn't quite what we had policy-wise wanted to do. So you could, I don't see a reason you couldn't strike that as well as the corresponding, I think there's only one definition associated with it, which is that event barn.
So sixteen forty-six? Take that? Table that?
Correct, so you could take that out of it and you could take out the event barn.
Well, that's up to Steve.
Well, he would, so you still need to vote on the motion on the floor as part of that. And then if that motion fails, then you could do a different motion.
The order can modify it.
The other, the other issue that was in there was, and again, it goes back to, you know, Berger, you know, brought up a good point, we had some discussion before. About, if you remember last month, you talked about, we had a debate about ten, ten acres meeting a farm and then it was, well, there was nitpicking about, you know, well, that's okay, it can just go to the ZBA and, well, we're noting in here ten acres, well, really, based upon Farm Bureau, Farm Bureau can show if you can provide, show that you're providing, based upon a certain dollar amount of income, it could be less than ten acres. And we've got that in here, so now we're, we're really, I don't think the homework was done on that. And I've seen, and I've read through the Farm Bureau that showed on there that it specifically stated with the Right to Farm Act that an individual could have less than that.
But the, the things that are mentioned in here are not, are not protected by right to farmer, when you start talking about allowing gift shops and, and things that are, these are value-added things that are not, that we can have a more stringent requirement than might be.
Right, but how'd you come up with the ten acres? Because I had asked that last month and it was.
Based on parcels that are available, Caitlin did do study and what size, how many parcels, we have certain sizes and to reasonably fit all these activities and parking and stuff. We had to strike a number that was reasonable to fit these uses on, it wasn't too small.
Well, what was the one that you said could be less? That we had that.
We had one that had a requirement of.
Where you wanted it, I mentioned that I wanted it at ten acres and you said that you wanted, it could be, if somebody came in with eight, eight and three-quarter acres or something, that they should be allowed to do it if the planning commission felt.
Somebody wanted it smaller, but we didn't want to go smaller than ten.
You said.
Yeah, but you said a lesser amount and then you said, well, the ZBA can handle that.
No, I, I, I said then it can go to the ZBA and you said, no. If I, it should be under the planning commission to decide if they wanted to have a lesser amount, if this would work or not.
So we're talking about a change at the bottom of page two, I believe, where under the agro business use, three, talking about the minimum size requirements, it has ten acres, and then we added C, so then they, that you can modify this minimum size requirement based on the filing findings of fact and have one and two. This makes it easier to get an exception based on the parameters there because it's hard to say it's not a self-imposed hardship when I just have less property, but I want to do all these additional activities. You're choosing to have additional activities, a typical farm does not require those, so it's a very, it should be a very difficult variance to achieve to not meet the minimum size requirements because you're choosing to add more uses to your property.
Right, now that, now it makes total sense, now I remember what you're referring to, this section, where the planning commission can, because every parcel's gonna be different. Every parcel will have its own unique circumstances.
Bringing in people and business and you have less acreage, you have, so you have less room for parking and you, you're, you're allowing more stuff to come in, and I, I don't think that that's right.
And it would, and it probably wouldn't work.
Address the potential nuisance of the surrounding properties, that's what it says in C.
Yeah, it probably would, it probably wouldn't work on most parcels, but there may be some that, you know, that the, the use is very small and the parcel's very unique, and then it would work, but.
Well, and this commission might feel like I said before, that it's unique and the next commission comes up and, that's not unique, you know?
Excuse me, okay, you have a comment? It seems to be a free for all tonight, anyway.
I, I appreciate it, I'm sorry. We do live in an agricultural preservation zone with the stated purpose of preserving the agricultural components in our community now. I'm not sure I understand what the rush is as long as, as long as there's, the sentiment is conveyed that we're not stopping other people from progressing with their plans. I think there's a, there's obviously a big conflict, some people feeling like Blake's, you know, the, the horse got on the stable with Blake's. I'm not sure why we would rush this along if, if we're just asking for other people's opinion on where you guys stand on this. Not sure what the harm is in, in getting other people's opinion.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, so we have a motion on the table to postpone this till next month?
Correct.
Any other discussions?
During that time, is it, I guess, do we have a plan of who it would like to be reviewed, who would like to review it and ensure that it actually is completed before next month's meeting? So it doesn't get postponed again?
Uh, yes, at ten D we will discuss that further.
Okay, any other questions or discussion on the motion to postpone?
One more question.
Okay, Joe, Jabara.
Sorry. Um, you know, under that too, Caitlin, you know, we're stating ten acres, that is not including a homestead or a barn or structure, that's on the property. So say if they were doing that, is that, is that, do we include that, the square footage? Like it has to?
So the minimum.
Is it a ten acre parcel period and then their homestead could be on one?
Correct, it's whatever the legal parcel amount is, not leasable area, we talked about that at one point. It's the parcel in which the activity is intended to be on.
Okay. Just wanna throw that out there.
Okay, Michelle. Are you able to keep up with this or do we have to, do I have to implement more parliamentary control and run?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so we, you have the motion that made by Nicole and seconded by Abercrombie to postpone the zoning ordinance text amendment till next month. Okay, any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimous, okay. Uh, let's move on to a new business, which is Parks and Recreation Plan. Our current plan was adopted January ninth, two thousand nineteen. So it's, you know, a little long in the tooth here, and this was requested by the township board clerk, I believe. And you have submitted a proposal to the township for the work to be done here. What action is required here by the planning commission?
Um, so this proposal, the planning commission also serves as the Parks and Recreation Committee. So this plan would be reviewed with you. It's been indicated to me that you have, are looking at a relatively basic scope. So not a whole lot's changed from your previous plan, and so that's, again, it's more of a review and move on, so it's a relatively fast schedule. So we're proposing that you would have essentially two meetings on content and then you would go for your public hearing. And so the proposal is part of this, there's, so as part of the DNR to be a approved plan, which you have to be an approved plan through the DNR to get grant funding. So if that is of interest, then most communities, you follow all of those rules and regulations, your current, your previous plan did. You require two forms of public engagement. So the public hearing that's already required, that counts as one. The other component would be is that you need to select in the second type of public engagement. So we proposed you could do a community survey with your master plan, it seemed like you had relatively reasonable responses on that. The other one would be to have a collaborative meeting. So you would essentially announce it to the public, you're trying to have, update your parks and rec plan. We could kind of structure that meeting to ensure specific stakeholders are included in that to talk about where do we want to go with our parks or something of that nature. So those are the two different public engagement options. And so I would presume that you would be looking at this proposal, if you've had any questions about that scope and then having a recommendation of one of those additional parks or one of those additional public engagement, which ones you think would be most effective? Ultimately, then the township board will choose to go into that contract or not then.
So the collaborative meeting, the stakeholders would be, in this case, would be talking the planning commission, the board? I mean, there's not a whole lot of Parks and Rec.
Um, so how I would, so how I would do it is, yes, you would target either local churches that utilize your parks, if you have some little leagues. I'm sorry, I don't know your community well enough to know all the players, but talk to the schools. You would have, invite people from those communities to please come and join us for a conversation about our community, about Parks and Rec. And we essentially have that larger kind of conversation. But it's most successful if you actually target certain organizations, ask for a couple representatives to come and join us at that meeting to get that, it, it's a smaller sample size in some ways, but it's very productive, detailed feedback from those who utilize our parks and say, well, what do we, how do we have a win-win situation? Because it's not just the township's parks, it's a lot of other users of those park systems.
So the, I'm just trying to see how this differs from an actual public hearing, when you would invite those stakeholders to that as well.
Correct, so we would, it's more of a casual setting, so I would not necessarily do it as part of a regular planning commission meeting, I would just call it a public meeting. We wouldn't have, I would try to take all the procedural components out of that meeting because it's more approachable for the public. And so that collaborative meeting, you essentially say, Caitlin, take out it. And we lead a community discussion about what do we like about them, what do we want to improve about them? Things of that nature.
Do we, do we have enough information from the survey that we collected about what the general community wanted to see in our future, like in our master plan? Whether it be a splash pad, whether it be additional baseball fields, whether it be a community, you know, something that, you know, that we can utilize for topics as they, as we have that conversation.
Probably wasn't targeted enough.
I, you can slip through your current ma, or master plan, I think they put it in the appendix. I, I want to say they probably asked a few questions about parks, but I don't, I don't know.
I think it was, yes, we did.
I don't know if it was enough to get.
But, but they were different questions.
Conversation, I guess.
There was, there was two questions, specifically targeted the park on Ridge and the park up here at the, the main park. That kind of was, I think, the extent of the questions.
I do like the idea of a meeting rather than another survey because I, this survey took, I think we extended it like six months.
Yeah.
So, I think the, I think if we go the meeting way, I think we'd be better off.
We could get a list of involved, you know, communities, I mean, everybody, baseball association, we have the softball, we have.
Just write down twenty right now.
Yeah, there's plenty of.
So at our first Parks and Rec meeting, what we would do is we'd go over some base content, we'd figure out who are those stakeholders, we'd figure out what date generally works, so don't pick like homecoming and things of that nature, not that we're near fall when that takes place, but just trying to make sure you're watching different events and things of that nature in the community.
Do we have like a deadline as to when this has to be done? Do we have a date or anything?
Um, so I recommend that we would do everything by November of twenty twenty-five. So the entire plan, we can have our public hearing, we can even have the township board have adopted it before, I guess, assuming we want to skip out on being here in December for Christmas, but you can have it, so then your twenty twenty-six plan is ready to go. So the state requirement is that they have to be submitted to their portal by February, I think it's fifteenth. And so you need to have your, all of your procedural components done and then submitted by February fifteenth to then be eligible to apply for grants by April first. So that's why.
Twenty-six.
Oh, twenty-six. I can't believe I had to write twenty-six already.
So, so what is the action to the planning commission? Because obviously the board has to approve the expenditure before we can.
Correct, so they would have to, so the planning commission would be looking to make a recommendation of the township board to proceed with the Parks and Recreation Plan update utilizing a collaborative meeting engagement option, I think is what you would deliberate towards. This is a three-month project, again, as long as we complete it by the end of the year. We do want to up, or officially adopt it and label it the twenty twenty-six to get your full five-year life out of it. It would be my recommendation. So you can choose to start it in the next couple of months, you could say, let's start in July. It really depends on what we think is going on.
And the current plan is not acceptable to, to submit with grants?
Correct, because it's only a five-year period.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion, questions for planner? So we're just, in this case, we obviously are just a recommending body to the township board for the expenditure of money, so the plan would be to recommend to the township board to start this recreation master plan with a collaborative meeting as a.
A three-month project?
Is it a three, three-month project?
When it started in April or May?
Uh, we can, we can talk more about when we want to do that, at least from a scheduling standpoint, again, it's gonna be at least three meetings, as long as it's done by November, that's more or less the goal. And so it just depends on, do we want to do it during development season? So I would expect site plans would be hitting right about now, next month, and next month. So typically those, they want to have their shovels in the ground by September. So a lot of Parks and Rec plans you start in July-ish and then have it all completed by November, but we can do it whenever you want.
With the collaborative meeting, though, we should do that. We're recommending something to the board. We're recommending that the board, that we review the Parks and Rec's plan to include a collaborative meeting. And this review will include three meetings and a collaborative meeting with the community stakeholders. That's a recommendation, those questions to the board, do we need more details on that?
Is there a, like, I mean, basically we're.
Is that your, whoops, sorry, go ahead.
We're, and we're essentially trying to apply for grants through state for the support of whatever the project may be, correct? That's what.
Um, so this proposal does not include the, I guess, what you would consider the second step, which is then applying to grants by April first, for those projects.
So, but we, they're looking to have what we would like to approve, like what we would like to improve on in the parks for that. for that application to be accepted, correct?
So to have not, to apply for a grant and to be grant eligible, you have to have a five-year plan. And any project has to be specifically listed in your plan.
Right.
So I'm not familiar enough with your community to know if, when you did it five years ago, are there missing components in which now you'd have the administration that would then be able to go petition for that grant and then move it forward. So I can't answer that question, but what we could do is make sure that it is worded wide enough that it could include everything you want, not that you're expected to do everything in five years.
Right.
Depends on the grant you're going for.
Right, well, and that's gonna be, yeah, that's what I'm saying, if we're having a community discussion to know, we are, I guess, what the, the budgetary side of things would be, so we're not saying, hey, would you guys want this? But it's not even in the realm of what we're seeking, is what I'm asking.
Well, you never know what you never know. Um, and so I encourage communities with Parks and Rec plans, you have to have phases of your dreaming. So things you want tangibly now in the next two years, you can be a little bit more concrete about those. But let's say, for whatever reason, you would like to have a mountain bike trail. I don't know that your park would support that, but let's say you want to do that, you want to do a pump track or something like that, and you're like, well, pump tracks are thousands of dollars and there's a liability thing and. But if that was an idea and that's a desire, it doesn't hurt you to just put that in as this is something our community is interested in. And so then, let's say, three years from now, the DNR says, we need more enrichment in these capacity, now there's a new grant. You can go for it because it's in writing, it's something you haven't institutionally forgotten, and you can proceed with those.
I think a pump track would be sweet, by the way.
That's the new, that's the new fun Park and Rec activity.
And we have a tr- a bike trail that goes right through our main, and that would be amazing, very good fit.
Caitlin, can I, uh, so based on just my numbers, is it forty-seven hundred for the base? And then five hundred for, if we're gonna plan on three meetings, so?
Right, with the additional collaborative meeting.
So sixty-two hundred roughly? Yeah.
Do you know, is the board planning on going after grants?
Well, it's five thousand two hundred.
Yeah, five, fifty-two.
The collaborative meetings, is it five hundred per meeting?
Well, it's just, you're doing just one collaborative meeting.
But up to three, though.
No, no, you just do one, you just do one.
Okay, that's, that's, I wanted to make sure that, so.
Because we can invite all the stakeholders to that and I can facilitate a good meeting.
So it'd be forty-seven hundred and five hundred, making it fifty-two hundred for this.
Caitlin's gonna knock it out of the park at that meeting.
Well. You know, you do have Jim, who's been very involved with the park. And Chris has got a good background with grant rating. I know Kevin is also helped a lot with grant rating.
Okay, so the board's planning on.
Got good rating, I don't know if they are, but it's a start of the year for us.
So.
We have a lot of good people on our side.
And so we can talk about that too. The current DNR grants, they don't change that much, it's just how do you pivot yourself and apply for those grants? And so if we did the Parks and Rec plan sooner as opposed to later, you could then technically preemptively work towards making those grant applications. Again, do April first, they do not accept late entries. And again, you just upload it by February, but you can already have your chess pieces moving if we already have our plan solidified.
Okay, so the motion is basically to recommend to the township board to have Wade Trim review the, the plan and facilitate, update the plan and facilitate a collaborative meeting?
Correct.
I'll second that. Now, just for discussion, I'll just, we're in the process right now, working on budget. Our next, we've gone through our first budget phase, our next one is on the twenty-seventh, I think. And then that's our last one before truth and budget. So we have a meeting next week, we can present it, I don't know if they'll be able to, obviously. It'd be off of last year's budget, but working on this year's budget, I don't know how that would potentially work.
I'm right around the number she told me to be at.
That she wanted to be, okay.
I'm, I'm right around it, I'm not under it, but I'm around it.
Just because I know the way this budget's going, it's extremely tight this year from what's already been presented.
Okay.
I just want to check that wording on that motion, I wasn't actually making it, so I'm gonna make you the motion maker. It was recommend the township board to Wade Trim, what's the wording?
Update.
Update.
The Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Rec, okay, Parks and Rec.
With the collaborative meeting option.
Collaborative meeting, okay. I'm, I'm just hoping Michelle writes faster than I do. Okay, do you, do you have the motion, Michelle? Okay, so the motion is to recommend to the township board to have Wade Trim update the Parks plan and facilitate a collaborative meeting. Steve Nicol, actually, you made the meeting because I was just reading.
Oh, sorry, I'll second your motion.
Well, it wasn't my motion, I'm making it, I'm making it yours and I'm looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, Finn. Okay, everyone clear on the motion?
Did I make the motion then?
You made the motion. I was, I was saying the motion would be, and I was just writing it down, and then you seconded it, but I, I'm making you the, the first. So, Michelle, do you have the motion? Okay. Come on, read back.
That's good.
Okay, Michelle, read, read back her first motion.
Um, to recommend the township board for Wade Trim to ex.
Update.
Can't even read my own.
Update.
To update the Recreation Master Plan with the collaborative meeting.
Okay, any questions on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you, Steve. Okay, so that brings us up to the Planning Commission Annual Report, which everyone should have an updated copy that was passed out this evening. Are there any comments on that? I have one.
Um, so I do want to apologize for the original one that I had sent out. I do realize that I missed two items, so the one in front of you has been revised to reflect those. One of the other things that this includes is a summary of the meetings by month. So it's my understanding that you really utilize this annual report, not just as a, the bare minimum what the institutional state requirement is, but you use it as a recall. So you can look at those different components and know where to pull minutes from in a very comprehensive way. And so I did add this additional month-by-month summary, so that way you can continue to keep that and utilize it how your institutional has, or institution has. I do know that there was one other clerical error in August that's been brought to my attention, so I took out the double-reviewed terminology. One of the things that's a fill-in-the-blank is on page two, the twenty twenty-five goals. So based on working with your community, I think it's important to look at the future as well as communication to the township boards, that's the next step, is this report is then submitted to the township board is to, again, identify your priorities. So it's to complete and adopt the zoning ordinance as we're working through that process, review and update the Parks and Rec plan, continue to adopt the recre-, the agricultural tourism text amendment. And then I put in a kind of fill-in-the-blank, conduct training for the planning commission. And so I didn't know, since our training that we did last year, has anything come up that has spurred anyone's interest? I know we have our new member, if there's anything that we think would be helpful, either another boot camp or something of that nature, but wanted to open the floor, is there anything that we ought to be looking into?
I have a question here. When you compare the two, you have Miller Farms as rezoning one on your updated one.
Okay.
Where's two?
Uh, so you should have Armada Storage Facilities below it.
Gosh, am I looking at the wrong one?
Public storage facility?
Yeah, just two total. No, because then this, this one has, if you look at it, just, it's clerical, I could deal with it later, but.
Oh, okay, sorry, Phil, not understanding.
Maybe I made a mistake, but just heads up.
Oh, okay.
So back to the question, conduct training for the planning commission on, if there's any topic that the, that the planning commission that would like to see, we need more clarification on? Or would it, would that be a good time to have a, is there anything that would apply to both the board and the township? Kind of a training co, co-meeting, you know, it's, you know.
Yep, so we do facilitate relatively often, often where you do have joint meetings. So everyone's subject to the Open Meetings Act, everyone's subject to different meeting procedures and protocols, everyone's subject to ex parte contact and things of that nature. Your township board is involved in some of the different planner-type reviews. And so sometimes making sure they understand the coordination between those or processing, those can be helpful topics in a joint meeting setting.
I mean, what does anybody think? I mean, we, we've got, you know, some new people on the board and probably would be a good idea to have a, have a joint meeting if there was something that the planner could facilitate and, and as a topic.
Just knowing everybody's expectations, it'd be nice to know our expectations of the board and then vice versa, just to know that we can help communicate better and clearly, so again, things can actually be moved forward and not just back and forth.
So roles and responsibilities and general process.
Yeah, general process or expectations.
I have one question outside of that.
Okay, Steve.
If I'm under, on special, oh, special land use, okay, I'm sorry, that's where, about the storage facility that it was approved, I misread that as site plan, because obviously it isn't, but now I see, yep, my mistake, now I see it, that was my own clarity.
Yep, no problem.
Okay.
Okay, I, I have one question on the special land uses, I, I came up with four. I don't see the SEMCO public utility building that was approved in September, that was a special land use.
That's there.
Oh, that's, well, there's something's missing because there was three.
It is, that's what I was telling her.
Okay, so the, so I have it under site plan, but forgot to duplicate it under special.
Under, under the special.
Because those were done in the same motion, right, okay, I apologize.
And same with your, hang on, there's something right here. Yes, if you follow through on other businesses, I'm comparing to what you gave us before, Cait. What, did you clear some of the fat out of here, the text? Is that what you're trimming it down because we're missing? Like for ex, for instance, under text amendment, construction of language, adoption of the Township Master Plan, review of the, the renewable energy, you took it out of your new one, where did you put it?
No, it was, it was added to the new one.
It's not, not on mine.
It's the last two items before twenty twenty-five goals, adoption of Township Master Plan and review of compatible. This is the new one, right here, if it has those two items on it.
I'm taking it as, there's two rezonations, one two, if it was.
Yeah, but where's one? Where's one? It's not on you.
There's two.
There's three, it goes site plan two, special land, that's on, anyways, let's go back to the other page. This is the one I was wondering on the back of these two.
Yep, I'm liking.
Okay.
I follow.
I was just.
Page, page two. Okay.
Page two of four and page two of two on the first one you gave me.
So if it's two of two, that's the old one.
Correct.
Okay.
What did you do? All right, you just added that additional language to two of four?
Yep.
Okay. All right, very good.
Okay, any other comments on the?
And then where's one back on the first page?
Where's one?
On the, you have site plan two, then special land use three from regular business.
Oh, I see what you're saying right here.
Where's one?
No, no, this is the number of site, two site plans, three special land uses.
There's two, it's not numerical, it's, there's two of these, there's three of these, there's two of these.
Yeah.
Okay, I was under impression there.
But make, make a note, special land use should say four.
Four, right.
Because SEMCO was also a special land.
Am I reading this wrong?
So if there was just an S like site plans. Site plans, special land uses, three.
Let's, let's kind of keep all the conversation one at a time because, for Michelle and for me, I can't hear anymore. Okay, any other comments on the, anything that's missing? I wouldn't mind, I didn't get a chance to read this one page, I'd like that we have it, but, you know, we kind of did it kind of quickly. Do we want to?
I'll make a motion to table.
To table, okay.
To table until next month, until we have time to read it.
Yes, yeah, because we just.
I did.
Okay, so this is to table till next month.
Okay.
That was Abercrombie, and who got the second?
Jody Jabara.
Jabara, okay. Any other discussion on this? I think this is, this is, this is much better, Caitlin, but we just, like I say, we get a couple of things.
Yep, and I'll, I'll get it revised, so it's updated.
And if, if there are any, if there are any comments, do you want like an email so that you can?
Yes, an email would be great, if you catch anything else since our discussion, happy to fix that.
Just copy the, okay. That way we can have a clean copy next month and we'll recommend it to the, to the board. Okay, so the table, the motion on the table is to table till next month. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, this next one is all you, Caitlin, this is the processing of applications. And I'm gonna let you take that one away.
All right, so one thing that it seems that we've, we kind of feel frustrated or it takes a long time to do different reviewing of applications. And so there are a lot of different ways communities can approach that. So I'm proposing to try something new to see if we get a different result and like it. Many of my communities that switch to this model find it to be more effective, though it requires applicants to submit earlier, it's more likely you go to one planning commission meeting. And so the process is proposed is to do one internal site point review prior to it coming to the planning commission. And so what I provided was a kind of table that shows that you are looking two months ahead on a submittal, you have your target meeting the previous month. So when we get the application and the initial response, we're gonna take two weeks to review it internally, myself and the engineer. I've already talked to Taylor just to briefly give her the heads up, and she is comfortable with getting that ten days, business days to review something and turn it around. That's something we both can do. The applicant then turns that document around to fix those revisions. Typically, that's your generic site plan informational stuff that's missing, it's your oops, we didn't read your ordinance, we didn't mean to get a variance, we'll move our building five feet this way, those type of things. And hopefully then, when it comes to your review, the second drawing, it's your discretionary components. It's, do you want to modify the parking? Do you think this buffer that is now proposed is sufficient? Things of that nature. So then the applicant can turn it around, several applicants, if you give them the heads up, this is our review process, they can do it in a week. Arguably, they have wonderful plans that they should be able to go right away. And so if they do, wonderful, it should be no problem in fixing a different few errors. I find often that there's not quite the case, but it's on them then to turn those plans around. We try to give them the heads up as soon as able so they can plan for that. And then the second set of revised drawings go to you, and they're just better quality typically. And so that would be our proposed change. So it's an administrative change, changing our due date and then internally doing that. With that, I think if we do switch this model, it probably makes sense to just modify our fee schedule slightly, just so then it's clear that, that everyone pretty much has to pay for two reviews then. But I would find, based on your current history, you're already doing that. And so baking that into the initial fee, I think, just makes it a little bit easier so you're not chasing money down the line as part of that, is you already know everyone's about doing two.
Well, that doesn't make the applicant much, does it make it much easier for the applicant?
Well, they're already having to do it, except instead of waiting for an entire month for your next meeting.
They would just be able to get it back, have the corrections made, yeah.
Yep, so technically it's less wait time by several weeks because you're not waiting for a planning commission meeting. It's being done administratively. We also are able to do a bit more gatekeeping, so if the first set of plans are deficient and then the second set of plans are deficient, then we're gonna wait for a third set of plans and see if those are also deficient. It's important to respect your time as reviewers to make sure that you aren't having to wait every single month. And it ultimately is better for the applicant. It, again, takes some communication upfront, we would update the website, so then it's very clear to applicants, this is the process, update your application forms, again, if people know about it, you can predict it. And so therefore they can plan accordingly with contractors or their designer staff to then be able to get the best quality product.
Well, you'd be surprised to know that in theory, that is what our plan is supposed to be. Is that the, you know, there, there is an initial conceptual thing and then where the applicant finds out things that are gonna be required, and then after that, the plan is supposed to be ready for the planning commission besides discretionary items, it just never kind of works out that way, but that's the way it's supposed to be.
Are you talking about the pre-application meetings?
Well, the pre-applica, well, sometimes, you know, we see applicants quite often that are just wanting to get a feel of what. Well, the pre-applica- well, sometimes, you know, we see applicants quite often that are just wanna get a feel of what the commission's looking for. So there's usually that meeting.
Right.
That you always have here at the planning commission, but then, uh, then it goes to, into an actual application and a site plan where you review it. And then it's supposed to come back to us only when it's ready with only discretionary items, it's not supposed to have a lot of things missing.
Oh.
But they're not supposed to, but sometimes they do.
Okay.
But, so that is the plan, so that's a hundred percent the way it should happen.
Okay.
What you're saying. It was, what, that's what it's supposed to be, cause we've had this discussion before where it doesn't come to the planning commission until it's ready.
Gotcha. And so I, so I think shifting those deadlines make it easier to make sure that, that the applicant is anticipating that, cause I, I think previous, it's pretty much, you get the application and we move. Um, and we roll that forward, and so by baking in that automatic time, it gives everyone a little bit of time to do that.
That, that's just, you need something a little more concrete, so it's more understandable and it's more workable for Michelle and.
Can I ask where in this chart, where does it fall in that this goes to the fire marshal? And where does it go to the building inspector? I mean, it's gonna, is it gonna go to them before it comes to the planning commission?
Yep, so they would be part of that standard initial review process, um, so we would essentially process it the exact same way we've been processing it. We're just requiring it sooner, so we can do our initial review, cause, um, for most jurisdictions, there's, you can do levels of reviews for building and fire code. There's the, the higher level stuff, and then there's the, I need your official electrical plans, we're not asking for electrical plans.
Right.
Um, building officials usually at this level are looking for, do you meet ADA stuff with your parking lot? Do you meet general building code facilitation?
Yeah.
Fire lanes, things of that nature, um, and then some things that you may wanna keep in mind X, Y, Z. Um, and then we'll take that onto the fire and building review, cause that happens usually after site plan review, um, is approved. Um, because it's another layer of money and time and engineering staff to do those next level of plans. But they do give initial comments, just like they've been doing as far as I know.
So it's, to implement this, now you'd be working with the zoning administrator, and then now you're talking about changing the fee schedule, so now you're also talking about the board approving these changes.
Well, so technically you wouldn't have to, um.
You're just changing the procedure.
Well, in a way technically, because you always have the initial fee and then any re-review is half of the initial fee. So technically, you just tell them upfront, you're automatically gonna get your first fee and your half free, so that's what you should pay. So I'm not, I'm, I guess what I'm not, I'm not changing the fee schedule as far as the pure dollar amount, I'm changing the packaging of saying. You need to pay for these two initial reviews and then you can proceed, so it's not changing. I guess I like to say changing, just because I think it's confusing if you say initial fee and then additional fee, and just saying this is our site plan review, it includes two reviews.
I, I think you get a hundred percent agreement from the planning commission that this, the way we'd like it to work, so I don't, so in order to implement this. Do you have to work with the zoning administrator and the board?
Correct, I think we'll talk administratively offline, um, but we wanted to make sure, I talked with this body first, um, before we just start.
You get one of these?
Yes, um, and just so you kind of know, in the background, we're gonna be trying something different, um, so even though you may see in your status report. You might see a project come through, it may not meet the requirements and therefore you may not be processing it as fast as you were historically used to. Because we're doing this additional review.
Okay. Any, any other questions regarding? Okay.
Do we need a motion to recommend to the?
Uh, no, we're doing it.
They're just doing it.
Okay, just doing it, alright.
They got the thumbs up.
Perfect.
Okay, we're back to the page, zoning ordinance update. Now. I, I'm assuming you were gonna go over this as well, I mean, it's, the zoning ordinance update on the back of this, the processing, okay.
Yep, yep, so, um.
It's not specifically on the, so you're just gonna roll right into that.
Uh, ten D. Um, cause it's about the zoning ordinance subcommittee, yep.
So now we're on the back of Caitlin's.
Page two.
Page two. Okay, the zoning ordinance update, and do you wanna take that away?
Sure, um, so we officially started in November of twenty twenty-three, um, and so it's been a little bit. Um, based on how busy we've been this year, just with different site plans and special land uses and rezonings. We haven't really been able to have the time to work on this project, um, we've been able to do one audit of one article. Um, and so I know that the original proposal was we would do all of it through the planning commission, um, but in an effort to try something different, to be more effective. Something I've done in other communities is doing it in a subcommittee format. Um, subcommittees typically include a few members from your planning commission, um, then they usually include your zoning administrator, usually the township supervisor. Because they're the chief enforcement officer for most townships. Um, it can include another township staff or liaison, but you're really looking at a smaller group of interdisciplinary people, five or six people. Um, and which we're gonna go through all of the audits, um, and a chunk, good chunk of the draft ones. And so they're gonna pick the general policy direction, and then it would come to the planning commission, and we would review it over a couple meetings, all of that content. Um, and ensure that that is the direction, hold our public hearing and continue with our project. Um, but this is one way that with these subcommittee meetings, they would happen outside of the planning commission, so it wouldn't be when we have time or when we have energy. It would be a very focused group, um, this would provide some flexibility, you could do it in person, we could do it virtually, we could do hybrid models. Where sometimes it could be virtual or sometimes in person, that way, um, as members have life, things happen, you could do either one of those options, just to keep the core group moving forward. Um, but that is a recommendation to, let's try something different to proceed with the project, especially now that we're having the Parks and Rec plan. Um, that we wanna be working on as well, and we just only have so many times in this venue.
So this would be subject to open meetings, be an open meeting?
Um, so every jurisdiction can choose, um, typically subcommittees are not required to be in open meetings act, because you're not making decisions. You are literally a work group, you're doing, these are workshops, um, in which you can then do, um. It's just recommendations and workshops, you don't technically have to have public comment, now some communities say, well, we don't really love that idea, we s-. I have no issue making these official subcommittee meetings open to the public, in which you just follow the notice, standard requirements and things of that nature, but you don't require.
That's what we had to do with the subcommittee for the.
Yep, I think that's what the attorney said, yeah.
Open meeting.
Yep.
It tends to be the direction that the township takes, so, um, that would mean in person here. I think we just kind of a two, there was, it was in person and virtual.
You're the one you were talking about before.
For the, yeah.
Um, and so one of the things with it being interdisciplinary, um, is that we would look for some members of our planning commission to join this subcommittee. Um, I think for orchestrating purposes, it would be helpful if you are interested in those positions, you would then email the supervisor, Chris. Um, so that way he can know, okay, these are the group of people based on Caitlin's availability, so and so's availability, the staff or whatever we wanna do there. This is the pool, and so it's a little bit easier to orchestrate from one person, um, working with all those different individuals. Um, so I don't know if you wanna talk about who's interested or who you wanna, um, encourage to be on that subcommittee, um, but ultimately. We would wanna let the supervisor know.
Another question, so far, there's how many articles we'll be reviewing?
Um, so we are reviewing all. Twenty, two, three, four, five.
We, um, be interested in specific articles?
Um.
You wanna be consistent?
I do wanna be consistent with the work group, so in the subcommittee format, what I've typically been able to do. So what I previously planned is we would do two audits in one meeting. Um, in the subcommittee format, I've been able to get through five audits, because it's a smaller, very focused group. And you're picking, and these are looking for very decisive decisions, so.
We're talking about four, four, five meetings.
Four, five meetings, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and so they're, they're more or less very decisive, um, you're not picking final language until we get to, again, to this venue at the planning commission. But it's saying, um, for example, we talked about what level of non-conforming makes sense, is the building expanding this way, this way, this way, okay? And then we go, we'd like A, alright, we'll draft A, or, um, several times, sometimes we'll be like, you know what? We're really not sure what direction the planning commission would wanna take, so we're gonna rain check it, I'll highlight it, and we'll. Provide option A, B, and C to the planning commission, and then we'll line item those out. The goal of the subcommittee is to say, what is the potential list that we want? And not include all the stuff we don't want, so we don't want sidewalks everywhere, so that clearly won't be a recommendation, but, um, keep all the very. Try to focus in that checklist of everything they want, when it comes to this venue, to be smaller.
I'll line the changes before I have to.
Yep, so you still will have that audit guide that goes with it, so I've already shown you my audit, my recommendation, and then I record the decision. That is gonna be our constant keeper, and so you can have a twenty-four page summary of every change that I'm proposing. Um, in addition to the hundred and sixty-page Word document that we're actually track changing and changing. So there, so you're not, the whole committee is not left out of the group, it's just trying to be more focused, um, and move through the project a little bit faster and efficiently. So they should be individuals that are interested in the specifics of the code, have a clear direction of which way we want our community to go. Ultimately, we'll still come here, um, but getting those initial direction giving, um, makes the project move faster.
Okay, so you're looking for at least probably two to three from the planning commission?
That's right.
The sup- supervisor?
Um, to send it to the supervisor.
So, okay, but on the committee, so it will have Michelle, the zoning administrator, yourself, and two to three people from the planning commission?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. So you want?
I think it's a good idea.
And, and I haven't been asked officially yet.
Well, I was, right off the bat, is somebody. Interested in doing the, the review, the audit with the?
Yes.
Okay, so Steve Arnold?
Yeah. Well, we just, we have to, we're supposed to email the supervisor, right? So we just, that we're, isn't that what you said?
Yep, so you have to email the supervisor, but you, I mean, if you wanted to just quickly say, oh, I'm interested, I'm interested, ultimately, send it to the supervisor. He's coordinating who, what all these schedule overlap is, so then we can say, okay, these are the members that can meet consistently.
Yeah, somebody's gonna schedule it.
Right.
So i- in most of these meetings, would they be during the day then?
I can't answer that question yet, I haven't talked to the supervisor, again, based on everyone that's interested on being on this committee. What times work, um, I think a hybrid situation option would be the best, um, but again, I am not facilitating what we must do. It's what the township feels they can do as well.
Well, I'd be interested.
Now, being an open meeting, it still allows for somebody to drop in and.
Oh, sure.
Mm-huh.
Does this fall under the fee you're already charging?
Yes, so I'm, um, so it's technically not within the scope that I put, but I, I believe that I should be able to do that. If I have any issue, I will let the township know immediately, but I wanna work within the current contract to make it work as best I can.
Should help you, it should speed, it, it doesn't.
So I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put asterisks around being more efficient and fast, um, it, it's been my experience, generally that's the case. Um, but again, as soon as I know that that's not working out, we'll have a conversation, um, but as far as I know, it should be more efficient. I should be able to do it within scope, it is my goal to do it within the scope I have.
Okay, well, we've got two, two members, and, uh, you know, like I say, I, I'd probably eavesdrop or drop in, but.
I'll put DJ's name in.
I, I will end up with the whole planning commission if everybody volunteers, so we've got.
Still, anybody has any option to email the supervisor, I mean, we, this isn't in stone that just Stephen and I, I mean, anybody else that might be interested.
Yeah.
Just email.
I'll put in.
Cause your, cause your style's a little different, that, that audit is something different, we've gone through one of them.
Correct.
And it was something we've never seen before, so. We have to get on the same page. Okay, so, so we need to have, or we can just have, uh, Michelle say that Steve Arnold and Beth Abercrombie are interested to be on the subcommittee to the, to Chris.
Yep, and then individually, if you could email Steve, or, sorry, um, if you could email Chris as well, um, just to make sure everyone, you have volunteered. Chris has your email, so then start the communication, um, just makes it a little bit easier.
You have Chris's email?
Uh, supervisor and, um.
Yeah, it should be on the website.
Okay, so that's, um, that's all you need is to get that going?
Yep, I just wanted to present the idea, um, talk it through, um, make sure that you're, um, part of that, understanding of that scope, um, for that. And so my goal with doing it in the subcommittee format is I, from a scheduling standpoint, I'll know the five articles that I wanna run through in that subcommittee meeting. If we get through all of them, great, then we'll do the next five, six, seven, whatever, um. But I don't necessarily know how fast we go through the, that content, um, so if we go as fast as I'm hoping we do, great, um, that's something we can predict. But sometimes you can't quite get through content as fast as you're hoping, so it's a, I have a order of operations for my zoning ordinance, so I can share that to everybody, um, if you want. But the thing is, I won't know how fast we can process it. Um, but I know at least when we get to the planning commission level, that can be more easily outlined, and that's something we could itemize on the agenda. Say zoning ordinance update on chapter XXXX, um, that's something we could do.
And hopefully we can bring our notes, um, from the subcommittee.
I hope you don't have to, because that is my job at the subcommittee.
Well, like, I'm just saying, like, for pros and cons, you know, like, this is, this is the, this is the reasoning behind this. And I mean, so the, the planning commission knows where we're coming from.
And understanding.
Yep.
I, I think that, you know, so they would understand, so that.
And just a little bit of context is why you made the decisions you made.
Yeah.
So that is your goal, is to come with that information, the reasons why and how it looks like that, and then the commission will have the final decisions as how the wording and things are gonna go.
Yep, so it'll have the recommendation, you'll have the draft one, which redlines from the original, um, where we're going, um, in certain capacities. I don't typically put the, the pros and cons at each, that's something we just verbalize, talk to, but I will be able to do that for any provision that we have drafted. Typically, when I present that back to the planning commission, I go through, so these are the changes that we talked about. The audit more than likely is gonna talk about more content than what you actually will adopt. Part of it being my philosophy that you don't know what you don't know, and so I wanna let you know, these are options communities do, but you need to let me know if this is the right direction or not. We don't have to do all of these things, so I'm trying to educate you on options.
When do we actually see formatting, I mean, cause I know there's gonna be, there's gonna be diagrams, graphs, new format, easy to use, anybody can look at and enjoy it.
Correct. Um, so the goal is that when the draft comes to you, it will actually have the different graphics, um, things of that nature in it. Um, the one caveat I will say is some articles, um, because they will be dramatically changed. If you still want the track change version, it's gonna be very difficult to see from the track change version to the updated version.
All the red, all the red lines are confused, you, you just.
I think it is not productive, um, uh, to ascertain what's going on, um, but that will then, again, you'll be able to see what of those components change. Um, and you'll see it in the live document, um, I work in one document, um, and so at any point, if you're like, I would like a snapshot of where we are. Um, I click export and I say, so there's some errors in here and some yellow and track changes, and it looks like a mess, but it'll be cleaned later, um, and so that'll be later. But again, working in one document, we can always take a snapshot of where we are now, and for the most part, it should be how we're going to present it. Excluding a few different potential graphics, um, we do a lot of what we call shortcut references, so we'll have an image. Let's say we're talking about something in parking, but then talk about landscaping, we use our landscaping button and you can then click the landscaping button and go back to landscaping, cause we talked about them. So hyperlinking in a way, that's done at the very, very end, to make sure that, um, all the track changes are accepted. Um, and then I go through and do a, a formatting purge to ensure that you don't have weird spacing and things like that.
The township ends up with a digital copy that can be amended.
Yep, so you get a Word document version as well as a PDF, um, you'll receive the shape files, which is the base for the zoning map. Um, and so the zoning map has already been audited, I talked with the previous, um, township, um, administration about different changes and things to make to that zoning map. So that'll eventually make its way back here too, cause with our new zoning ordinance, we're adopting a new zoning map.
Okay. All clear? Okay, no action required for that, that's.
Nope, no action informational and.
Okay, that was the end of our agenda. Okay, that was the end of our agenda, so we're going to move on to public, our last public comment period before adjournment. Does anyone have any public comments?
Sorry guys, Jason Berger, Armita Ridge Road. Sorry guys, I know I've been beating the farming protections drum, but there's a reason. We have a problem in this country where we're losing farmers and we're losing farmland. And we have an opportunity in our community to preserve our agricultural roots and, and create kind of a placeholder for, for agriculture to make a rebound. I've got a couple of quick questions, I'm just kinda curious, from the planner, how many other agricultural communities you work with? I heard you talking about training or offering training to the board. And I was curious what right to farm training you and your staff go through to prevent conflicts in the ordinances that you're creating with the, with your clients? And also what right to farm training you offer to the municipalities that you represent? I have one more quick question, just so I can step away, but I was also wondering where we can find the proposed future use planner map?
Okay, do you wanna address the comments about the right to farm or the communities or?
Um, so I don't know that, I don't know if you want me to list every single one of them. Majority of my experience working with the right to farm is in like the Lapeer County area. I would say that's easily over fifteen different rural townships that I would say, and working in that environment. One of the biggest things that we try to do as part of compliance with the right to farm act is you reference the right to farm act. And make sure that you're not trying to say, and we're gonna do all these additional tiers. You, we look at the right to farm act, they do yearly changes to the right to farm act rules. Typically, they're not all major changes, some years have been more major than others. But we look at that every single year to ensure that even at the draft ones, I think, that are out now, based on their review clock. We check what the draft ones are and what the official ones are to ensure that we're keeping in within those parameters. But for the best of our ability, it's, and then also making sure that you keep in mind the township's philosophy. So some communities like to be right on top of the right to farm act, other communities say, I couldn't care less about the chicken count. As long as the chicken coop is X feet away or whatever the case is. Again, there's a difference between commercial and hobby. And so the question we will have at the subcommittee first is, what is your township philosophy towards hobby versus commercial installations? And the level of rulemaking you want to have? When we first started our journey, I mentioned, don't make a rule you don't wanna enforce. So if you don't wanna send somebody to go count chickens, then don't have a chicken county rule. And so that's kind of what, more or less, we look at it from, we attend regular Michigan Planning Association conferences that have right to farm act trainings. Usually put off by the Michigan State Extension Group. And then as far as when we do education on it, it stays to our minimal lens of incrafting zoning ordinances associated with it. We typically recommend, if communities want a specific training on the right to farm act, you can go talk to Michigan State Extension. They have very qualified speakers to that go more in depth. But I'm gonna focus on the zoning logistics, the, the difference between your hobbyist and your commercial enterprises, which are the right to farm act. And really talk about what level of oversight do you feel represents your community philosophy? And let's stick to that, ensuring that it meets all our state requirements.
Thank you for your comment, and, and we did finish up our master plan, which of course, one of our, our goals is that we are trying to promote preservation of our agricultural community. And we try and gear our ordinances the same way, but you know, there's always room for improvement, but that is our, that is our goal. Any other public comments?
It's also assigned.
Yep, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I missed that part.
Future land use map is in the master plan and available online.
Yeah, yeah. Any other public comments? Okay, it is now. Eight thirty-six. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-six.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Vin was quick and Steve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you very much for joining us, we're here every Wednesday, except for January.